Welcome, everyone. I call the May 1 city council meeting to order. And as a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. So both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you all to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May is always a fun month because we have many organizations and cultural organizations, as well as staff groups that we like to recognize. So we have a lot of special business this evening. The first item under special business is ID 1376, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Pamela and anyone with Pamela to come and join me up over at this microphone. We'd like to have all of you join us by standing up in front. I want everybody here to be able to see the beautiful, beautiful, beautiful dresses and blouses that everyone is wearing. Yep, right in front of the council if they want Pamela, right there.
Come on over.
And we're doing quite a few of these tonight, so just to let everybody know, whoever is presenting the proclamation will read the proclamation, present it to a recipient who will then choose whether to say a few words or not. And so the first one this evening I am presenting, and as I said, it is the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month Proclamation. So whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an annual celebration that recognizes the historical and cultural contributions of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in creating the American story. And whereas we celebrate the growing diversity of Isaguas with the second largest race being Asian American residents representing 25.5% of our population. Diversity brings richness, opportunity, and growth. And whereas the term Asian American is an umbrella term for the entire Asian continent, which embodies an incredibly diverse and vast groups of people, languages, ethnicities, and traditions, with more than 50 different countries and regions included. And whereas the term Pacific Islander is the umbrella term which embodies—oh, pardon me—whereas Isaguas recognizes the invaluable contributions from Asian American and Pacific Islander individuals, families, and businesses. And whereas we acknowledge those contributions of American groups such as Far East, Southeast Asia, and the Indian subcontinent, and contributions of Pacific Islanders groups such as Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia to our local arts, education, sciences, and to our economics, social, and democratic institutions that strengthen our city. And whereas we admit the past and current hardships for Asian Pacific Islander Americans, and we strive to foster inclusion to ensure all people have an equal opportunity to live and prosper. And whereas we must continue to take a proactive stance that seeks solutions to address intolerance and disparity, they are our neighbors, our coworkers, our friends, and our family. And whereas we stand in solidarity with the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities, and commit to supporting members in meaningful ways by paying tribute through education, acknowledgements, and celebration within our community. And whereas we come together as a community in a spirit of unity to celebrate the invaluable contributions that enrich our city with Asian and Pacific Islander heritage. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Isaguas, do hereby proclaim May 23 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Isaguas. And I urge the community to join in special observance and celebration of Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage. And I'd like to invite Pamela to come up and share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I'm Pamela Lynn Benson, born and raised in Taiwan. Isaguas has been my home. I live here 30 years and will be longer. I love Isaguas. Diversities such as culture, languages, values, histories is very special here in Isaguas. All is constructed by its people. We, the approximately 40,000 Isaguas residents, we greatly appreciate the outstanding and capable leadership from the city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
And all the best.
So we're going to take a quick picture, and maybe council would like to stand up in the second row behind, and we'll get us all together. to be presented by Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Joe.
All right, whereas Isaguas economic development professionals promote economic well-being and high quality of life for Isaguas by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas Isaguas economic development professionals work in a wide variety of settings and topics across our community, including arts and culture, sustainability, transportation, redevelopment, public safety, human services, outdoor recreation, and others. And whereas Isaguas economic development professionals partner with organizations and other public agencies, including the Greater Isaguas Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Isaguas Association, Visit Isaguas, Gilman Village Merchants Association, Isaguas Highlands Council, Port of Seattle, Greater Seattle Partners, Reach, and Eastside Cities, to name a few, to ensure a flourishing economy. Now therefore, Mayor Mary Lou Polly of the City of Isaguas does hereby proclaim May 8 through the 12 to be Economic Development Week. You guys get a whole week. That's awesome. In the City of Isaguas, and we invite the entire community to join us in thanking Isaguas economic development staff for their service and outstanding contributions. I'll hand this over then to Jen Davis Hayes. I have the pleasure of working with her on the LTAC Committee, and she does a great job with her crew.
Sorry, I forgot to say thank you. So thank you very much, Councilmember Joe and Mayor Polly, and thank you to our partners here and those who are not able to be here tonight for making Isaguas a great place to do business. Thanks.
So nice to see our team and our partners all together. The next business under special business this evening is ID 1359. This is the Public Service Recognition Week Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Stephanie. Just do Stephanie. Just Stephanie. Okay, she's taking a picture. Okay, she's got to get in the picture. Okay. Wally, I want to get Carmen in the picture too, so let me do it. Great. Ha, ha, ha. Welcome, Carmen. I was teasing them because they look like they called each other before they came. So whereas the City of Isaguas employees, elected and appointed officials and volunteers are instrumental in making our community more sustainable, vibrant, connected, and safe. And whereas by celebrating Public Service Recognition Week, a nationally celebrated event since 1985, we honor the public servants who serve the community and its residents, businesses, and visitors. And whereas the Isaguas community receives service every day by public employees who serve in a variety of valuable roles, including administration, parks and community services, community planning and development, public works, police, fire, municipal court, finance, executive, and administrative services. And whereas the creativity and diversity of perspectives of our elected and appointed officials inform and advise the work of the city and are integral to the quality of service and life in our community. And whereas the effectiveness and efficiency of government depends largely on public employees and volunteers who serve Isaguas community. And whereas the City of Isaguas public servants strive to provide excellent and timely customer service to the residents, businesses, and visitors in the City of Isaguas. And City of Isaguas employees, elected and appointed officials and volunteers, work every day to make our community more sustainable, vibrant, connected, and safe. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Isaguas, do hereby proclaim May 7 to 13 to be Public Service Recognition Week. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Well, I just get to stand in as Human Resources Director on behalf of all staffing. If you are a city employee, can you please raise your hand or stand? You all make a difference every day. This is one week, but I'd also like to introduce you to Carmen Chamberlain, who is our recruitment and retention coordinator. While this is a week, we certainly recognize staff for doing more in the city in terms of attraction and retaining the talent of that staff all throughout the year. So thank you for this, and thank you all for city staff. But this goes beyond one week, so thank you.
Thank you. Oh, let's do a picture. Oh, okay. Okay. Next up, I am going to call up Deputy Counsel President Hall, who'll be doing ID 1360, Professional Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation.
Hello, everyone. A couple of quick introductory comments. I have the privilege tonight to present the proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week and thank our outstanding clerks here in Isaguas. Those of us on council and in the administration know exactly how outstanding our clerks are. But for those of you who don't, these are the dedicated public servants working behind the scenes to run our meetings, both in person and virtual, organize our activities, prepare agendas, take minutes, facilitate public engagement, recruit board and commission members, manage public records, keep us in compliance, liaise with King County elections, know everything about our bylaws and our rules of order, and just generally keep the wheels of government moving. Of course, they do so much more, and without them, we would certainly grind to a halt. They are meeting preppers, rules experts, passionate public servants, and all around good people. So Tisha, our city clerk, and Chris, our deputy city clerk, are here tonight. To you and to those around you, know that you aren't just appreciated, you are admired, and you are treasured, and thank you for all you do. So without further ado, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and is the oldest profession among public servants. And whereas the office of professional municipal clerks provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the profession through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments and contributions of the professionals who serve in Isaguas City Clerk's Office. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, the Mayor of Isaguas, does recognize the week of April 30 through May 6 this week as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the City of Isaguas, and I invite the community to join us in thanking the City Clerk's Office for their service and outstanding contributions.
Pass this to you. Yes, thank you. And on behalf of Chris Grabowski, our deputy clerk, who's online with us tonight, and Tammy Mueller, the third member of our team, who does all things records and is very awesome, thank you so much for this recognition. It's a pleasure working for the city.
And on we go down our list with ID 1361, Drinking Water Week Proclamation. And Councilmember Joe, I think you're up again.
Come on up, Greg Keith. So while he's coming up here, as many of you know, we get our drinking water from Cascade Water Alliance. I've had the pleasure of serving on that board for the last year plus, and really appreciate that organization, what they do. Chris Ray serves as our alternate for the board and also serves on one of the subcommittees for finance. Whereas for more than 40 years, the American Water Works Association and its members have used Drinking Water Week as a unique opportunity for both water professionals and the communities they serve to recognize the vital role water plays in our daily lives. Whereas water is our most viable natural resource, and drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, and support of our economy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector is vital to maintaining and protecting the essential resource. And Isaguas Public Works Department staff and operators work to ensure the safety and quality of drinking water and maintain the infrastructure we rely on. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the Isaguas community is called upon to protect our source waters from pollution and practice water conservation. Now therefore, Mayor Mary Lou Polly, in the City of Isaguas, does hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through the 13 to be Drinking Water Week in the City of Isaguas. I invite the community to join in thanking the public work servants that protect and maintain our water systems, and to ask everyone to do their part in conserving and protecting this vital natural resource.
We all appreciate getting recognized for the hard work that all our engineering and operations staff do daily. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So changing it up a little bit, the next proclamation will be presented by Councilmember Mart. It is ID 1362, Correctional Officers Week Proclamation. Thank you, Councilmember Mart.
Try that again. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I believe accepting the proclamation this evening is Acting Commander Larson, Jail Manager Enders, and Corrections Officer Watson, who are with us. So whereas the City of Isaguas dedicated corrections officers are essential to our justice system. And whereas much is expected from the men and women who every day supervise offenders in corrections facilities and without whose daily hard work and sacrifices we could not operate. And whereas corrections officers are skilled professionals who must act as counselors, communicators, educators, and experts at crisis intervention, and must protect our safety while maintaining their professional demeanor, often in a challenging environment. And whereas corrections officers must possess the intuitive sense to resolve conflict and support restorative activities while housing offenders in a humane environment, often to the risk of their own well-being. And whereas all are committed to a common goal, the secure, safe, and humane operation of our jail facility, where employees work to reduce future crime and change an individual's criminal behavior. Now therefore, Mayor Polly and the City of Isaguas do hereby proclaim the week of April 30 through May 6 to be Corrections Officers Week in the City of Isaguas, and we invite the community to join us in thanking the city's correction officers for their service and outstanding contributions. In witness whereof, Mayor Polly did herefore set her hand and seal of the City of Isaguas this first day of May 2023. Acting Commander, do you want to speak to us?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. You know, I've been here about a year and a half, and I have to say, I've never overseen a correctional facility before. But truly, I've learned a couple of things over this past year. Professionalism, absolutely, is what we see downstairs every day on a daily basis. And I think just as importantly, compassion. I see these men and women who work downstairs for us every day handle our inmates with compassion. And I think that's why we—you don't hear much about us, and I think that's one of the reasons why. We have very, very few problems downstairs, and I just could not be prouder of the work that our staff does downstairs. They've gotten some incredible grants this past year to deal with opiate concerns. We've got GoPaks for many of our inmates that have inside the GoPaks is enough supplies to last them for three days, maybe before they have an appointment for treatment. That was one of something that we were told by our medical staff providers that we could have improved upon, and we did. So I can't say thank you all enough for this appreciation and the proclamation. They're very well-deserving. Thank you.
ID 1363, Water Safety Month Proclamation will be presented by Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. He's Zach Leeson. Are you here? Listen. Come on up. And Cliff, is Cliff here? Come on up. Want you to know that this proclamation is actually pretty special by all the proclamations because we're actually—this is a month and not just a week. So this proclamation is for National Water Safety Month. So whereas the National Water Safety Month is celebrated annually through the efforts of several key organizations, including the American Red Cross and the National Recreation and Parks Association. And whereas the City of Isaguas is committed to promoting healthy lifestyles and providing opportunities for community members to engage in safe and enjoyable recreation activities while actively working to create more diverse, equitable, and inclusive community. And whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities play a vital role in improving physical and mental health, enhancing the quality of life of all people of all ages, abilities, races, ethnicities, genders, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic background. And whereas the Julius Bone Pool and Aquatic Programs offered by the City of Isaguas provide a valuable resource for the community. And whereas the Parks and Community Service Aquatics Team supports a variety of programs. And whereas the city's well-trained staff who deliver these programs are essential to promoting of water safety by providing aquatic activities in a safe, responsible, and inclusive manner. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of Isaguas, hereby proclaims the month of May to be Water Safety Month in the City of Isaguas, and we invite the community to take—to join us in thanking Isaguas aquatic staff for their service and outstanding contributions in
On behalf of the 54 hard-working staff at the pool, we would like to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. And thank you to all the council members who helped in the proclamations this evening. There are two more to go. I'll be presenting those. The next one is ID 1434, Travel and Tourism Week Proclamation. And I would like to invite Kristi and John, if John is here to come up. Whereas this year marks the 40th anniversary of National Travel and Tourism Week. And whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of Isaguas economy, development, and workforce. And whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country, with an economic output of $2.6 trillion in 2022, supporting 14.5 million American jobs. And whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in Isaguas and across the United States by generating $84 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2022 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. And whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that move our economy, our nation, and Isaguas forward. And whereas the travel industry cannot recover without the full return of leisure, business, and international inbound travelers, increasing travel to and within the United States drives America forward to a more prosperous future. And whereas the travel industry's success will grow Isaguas economy and workforce, since prior to the pandemic, small businesses accounted for 60% of leisure and hospitality employment. And whereas travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits in businesses, and fosters mutual understanding. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Isaguas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 to 13 to be Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Isaguas, and I urge the citizens of Isaguas to join me in recognizing the critical role that this industry plays in Isaguas. Are you speaking today?
Yes, I am.
Very nice. I'm going to turn it over to John.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Isaguas a great place to live. The community is wonderful and welcoming, and it's my honor to accept this. And the joy that all the people that work in the tourism industry, hotel people, it makes our life just magnificent, and we get to show off such a wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll get you to hold it, and we'll get Kristi to get in closer.
We'll move to her.
We'll move to Kristi.
Thank you very much.
And the last on our list of proclamations this evening is ID 1436, Affordable Housing Week Proclamation. And I'd like to invite Elizabeth Mulpan to come up and join me here for this one.
Nice to see you. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as a housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of their gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas the Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200 And whereas the Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% of King County area median income. And whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate-income households. And whereas the CDC recognizes safe, healthy, and affordable housing within communities of opportunity are key social determinants of health. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employees, and the community as a whole. And whereas United to Raise Public Awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 17th to 13th to be Affordable Housing Week in the City of Issaquah. The City of Issaquah endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so, recommits itself to ensuring that our community thrives with opportunity and that all people in it live with dignity in a safe, healthy, and affordable homes.
And Elizabeth is going to address the group.
I want to thank the city for this recognition of the need for affordable housing and East Side Affordable Housing Coalition for asking me to be here. And I'd like to thank the city for all you have done in funding groups that help people to stay housed, because even much of our housing, which we intended to be affordable, does not meet that criteria of being affordable at 30% of one's income. There's a long way to go on that, and some of it is in the hands of our state rather than our locale. But I thank you for all that you have done through groups like the Issaquah Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul and so on to keep people housed when the rents just keep going up.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So for the remainder of our meeting, if anybody was here for proclamation and does not want to stay for our business portion, no problem. You are allowed to stay as long as you want or leave whenever you want. We're going to move into the next section of our meeting, which is Audience Comments. And members of the public may address the council at this time, either in person or virtually, and those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. So if you are joining us virtually and you would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star three, and if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before we close this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. So anyone who is making remarks this evening, please direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, please unmute your microphone if you're a virtual attendee or step to the lectern if you're here with us this evening. State your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And if you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, but you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you are able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted, and citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect to the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank all of those who took the time tonight to address us. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Jenny Craswell.
There you go. Good evening, Mayor Polly and council. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jenny Craswell, and I'm the CEO of Leadership Eastside.
And I'm Lynn Janelle, Chief Advancement and Engagement Officer of Leadership Eastside.
Leadership Eastside has no address right now. We are virtual. We are meeting in coffee shops across the east side. Leadership Eastside was founded in 2005 by prominent east side leaders such as yourselves. Leadership Eastside was created to promote connections, develop and enrich leaders, and act as a catalyst for communities to address important issues and meet the challenges of a diverse and dynamic region. The City of Issaquah has supported our work since the beginning through sending participants through our program and offering funding support whenever possible. We are here to thank you for your long-term support of Leadership Eastside. More than 50 Issaquah residents have graduated from our two-year Adaptive Community Leadership and four-day Executive Insight programs, including state representatives Lisa Callen and Bill Ramos, Matt Bott with the U.S. State Department's Bureau of Cyberspace and Digital Policy, and Kelly Richardson from Rowley Properties. And on May 11th, we will happily celebrate Issaquah resident Mariana Subaya as she graduates with our class of Adaptive Community Leadership Class of 2023. So when you add in those who work in the City of Issaquah, as well as those impacted by participants, the reach of your support is unbounded. Our graduates are connecting across corporate and nonprofit, government, and community to address the issues we face, engage multiple voices and opinions, and work toward collaborative solutions for the good of the community. We are currently seeking nominations for our two-year class that begins in September. We are appreciative of Issaquah's staff and leadership who have recommended numerous candidates in the past, and we look forward to discussing your recommendations for our 22025 cohort. We wanted to join you tonight to share our appreciation for the City of Issaquah. Thank you for your support, which has positively impacted the entire east side region. Thank you, and we look forward to the important work we'll do together in the future.
Thank you very much, ladies. I believe former Councilmember Traeger and former Councilmember Goodman also participated in that program.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. Next, City Clerk, Susan Glicksberg.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. My name is Susan Glicksberg, and I have lived in the Montreau Development in the City of Issaquah for the past 25 years, or longer than 25 years. In addition, I've been the Governmental Affairs Chair for the Board for the past four years, and I'm here with present and past Board members. Montreau has 242 homes in a 260-acre master-planned community. Half of the acreage is wooded and was deeded to the homeowners as common areas. For three decades, volunteer HOA boards and homeowners have ensured the community followed the established covenants, conditions, and restrictions, the CCNRs, while maintaining all common areas, including the detention ponds. Our lakes are stormwater detention ponds, and they are required to move stormwater from Cougar Mountain down to Lake Sumamish. These ponds are designated Natural Growth Protection Easements, NGPE, and we are the only community in the City of Issaquah with this designation on detention ponds, perhaps because Montreau was developed with King County and not the City of Issaquah. Maintaining these ponds benefits our community as well as the City of Issaquah, and when they are not maintained have ill effects such as flooding of neighborhood roads, which actually occurred in 2010. Our HOA has maintained these ponds with the approval of the City of Issaquah for the past 30 years by performing maintenance twice a year as stated in our covenants. This involves controlling algae and removal of vegetation that, if not removed, would overtake the ponds and reduce their functionality. Last summer, we reached out to the city for help with an issue in one of the storm detention ponds in the community. We were given the option of applying for removal of NGPE at a cost of over $10,000 with no guarantee of success, or to obtain a permit each time we performed maintenance at a cost of $3,300. This is a significant cost, which we have not budgeted for, as we have not been required to pay for permits for this maintenance for the past 30 years. We also maintain NGPE common areas along Village Park Drive as you go up the hill. We have met with the mayor and communicated with other city employees to try and resolve this challenge. We will have a hard time justifying to our homeowners expenditures that could range from $3,300 to $9,900 per year in permits, depending on how much maintenance may be required. And again, having these ponds control flooding and help the community and the city. In one of our meetings with the mayor, she stated we had numerous violations in the pond NGPE areas. When we investigated this, many of the violations were with individual homeowners cutting trees, not with the HOA maintaining the common areas and the detention ponds. The only violation related to the ponds and involving the HOA was a noise violation due to the pond fountains, which are required to circulate the water to reduce algae growth. This issue was resolved to the satisfaction of the city, and there have been no violations related to the HOA's ongoing maintenance of the detention ponds or common areas. We even have emails from the city praising our maintenance of the ponds and recommending us to keep up the regular maintenance of the ponds. And I'm going to read just a little excerpt from April of 2018. "We thank you for your cooperation in this program. You should appreciate the fact that you are doing your part to help improve the water quality of our streams. And keep in mind that you should perform regular maintenance on your stormwater system to keep it operating at maximum efficiency. We recommend at least once a year and more frequent cleaning in high areas." And that was from the Public Works Department. "Given this new permit requirement for something that has been recommended by the city, we were left with no option but to hire a land use attorney who negotiated with the city's attorney a five-year maintenance plan outlining our current maintenance procedures for the ponds and other common areas. We submitted these plans at the end of March and have had no response from the city. We also tried applying for a permit for this five-year plan, but no category aligned with our case. We are currently receiving complaints from homeowners residing in the lakes because we have not performed our maintenance in the last year. We have made every attempt to work this through the appropriate channels with the city personnel, but are still, a year later, unable to maintain the ponds, common areas, and other parts of the system. We continue to get pushed back from some city employees, even suggesting we need to look to our CCNRs to explain their rulings, which makes no sense. We appreciate the services the city provides like snow removal, leasing, and public works. But in conclusion, on behalf of all Montreau residents, we are asking for our elected officials to work with us so that we can find a reasonable and cost-effective mutually beneficial solution to this issue. We would like to keep our community in Issaquah looking beautiful but functioning as well. If this issue cannot be resolved quickly, it will have a detrimental effect on our community as well as the city's infrastructure. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak."
Thank you, Susan. City Clerk, who's up next? Erin Longcherry.
Thank you, Mayor Polly, council members, and city staff. I'm Erin Longcherry, and I am a resident of North Bend, but most frequently found at 179 First Avenue Southeast at the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank as the Operations and Programs Director there. On behalf of the staff and the Board of the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, I want to take a minute to thank the city administration, the committee members, council members, and staff who have worked tirelessly over the last several years on a major overhaul to Title 18 updates of the Issaquah Municipal Code. It has been no small task. I would also like to take a minute to thank the administration for their recommendation of Amendment Number Two to Title 18, which you can find on page four of tonight's Agenda Bill. I respectfully urge the council to consider voting for the amended language, which will, as stated, provide a process for determining required parking for uses that are not specifically listed, and to eliminate the 40% cap for parking reduction to allow redevelopment of legal, non-conforming, community service establishments that meet the goals and policies of the city's Human Services Strategic Plan. The Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank is a vital pillar within the city's Human Services Strategic Plan. We provide key basic human resources like food, essential clothing, hygiene, outdoor supplies, and resource referrals to ensure a safety net that would otherwise be missing in our region. In doing so, we help enhance socioeconomic equity, diversity, and a thriving community. Our ability to expand our programs to meet increasing needs and priorities as identified within the Human Services Strategic Plan is constrained by our current facility, and redevelopment is essential to accommodate both growth and to expand much-needed services. We are so thankful for the many opportunities over the last few months to participate in the robust public comment process around Title 18. We are encouraged and immensely grateful that the administration, after countless long hours spent by staff, committee members, the mayor, and the council as a whole, on Title 18 planning, work, revisions, and further revisions, sees value in providing a process for an organization like ours to successfully partner with the city in meeting the growing human services needs in this community. Thank you for considering our request, and we do really celebrate your thoughtful and comprehensive work on this really important effort. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. City Clerk, who's up next?
Elizabeth Mopin.
My name is Elizabeth Mopin. I currently live at 100 Big Bear Place in Issaquah, but there was a time when I lived in my vehicle on the streets of Issaquah. And I know that you are trying to do what you can, both to keep people housed, to make sure that housing that they're living in is affordable to them, and to help people who are not housed. In your doing this, I hope that you will bring in the voices of people who have been on the streets. In order to change things, we need the voices of the people who are most impacted. There is an organization called the Washington State Live Experience Coalition. If you contacted them, they could help you find people who are well-acquainted with the system here. Some of the people who are formerly homeless are in our supposedly affordable housing, and some of them are paying 70% or more of their income for housing that was supposed to be affordable but really isn't. Our state legislature failed to pass a bill that would have given us some rent stabilization. As a result, things are back in the hands of individual municipalities to try to help people. Our property taxes are going up, and that's forcing many people who are on fixed income out of housing that they were formerly able to hold on to, and the pandemic has hurt people. It's really a crisis, and it isn't just in Seattle. And putting all of the resources in Seattle doesn't help people out in the hinterlands. Our social network is out here. We need resources here. We need to know that our community is behind us. And bringing together people who have experience with being homeless, we can help each other to lift up and get back on our feet. So I thank you very much. You have done much. There's a lot more still to do. Good luck.
Thank you, Elizabeth. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up this evening?
Mayor, no one else has signed up. There are a few individuals attending online, but I don't see that any of them are desiring to speak at this point.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you to everyone who got up to, oh, we have, come on up, Mariah. Okay, there's two more speakers. Thanks, Mariah.
I didn't quite get my name on the list this evening. Thank you, Mayor Polly, City Council, and staff. Thank you, Mayor Polly, city council, and staff. My name is Mariah Batiste, and I live at 1231 Hickory Lane, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. And I'll just start by saying it's really wonderful to see all of you. I got to see a few of you last week, but not everyone. And I am here to talk about Title 18, the Land Use Code. I just wanted to start by saying that is such a huge body of work, and it's such an amazing job, being able to read through all of the thoughtful changes that have gone into that and really that alignment with the city's strategic plan. So that's wonderful to see. I am also here, as Erin was just here, from the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, to ask for your support of Amendment Two regarding parking. And just for listening to our public comment in the past and giving us all the time to really work through some of those details. Last week, I talked about a couple of journeys. One was for the city in regard to human services, and one was the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. Tonight, I'm going to give you the abridged version. But just in my point of view, all the way back to the time that I was a Human Services Commissioner, we talked about a hub for human services. We talked about the ability to have human services within the downtown core. Going through the city's first strategic plan, human services was a goal. And then the Human Services Department for the city of Issaquah had developed its own strategic plan. All of this collaboration that has started to happen, and has been happening for years, but in my view, anyway, has really expanded between the city, the police, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank. And I love seeing all the partnership and all the collaboration that's happening and how far we've come with all of that. As you all know, and I won't go into all of the detail, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank has been on a very long journey and done a lot of due diligence in terms of looking for the right space. We've really hit that time where we really need the ability to grow, and the current location is not allowing that. So as you know, we've looked into a lot of different areas. But what we've heard from the clients is that they really... They love our location, and they need the human services in the downtown core. And the redevelopment of our current space is really essential for that continued growth. So amending the language in Title 18 to really focus in on having human services as a part of that strategic plan, both for the city and for the Human Services Department, that strategic plan seems to make all the sense in the world to me. And again, I just love how all of these things are coming together and that continued partnership and focus on having human services in our downtown core. So I thank you for your consideration. I applaud all the work that has gone into the revision of Title 18. Again, that's such a huge body of work. I'm talking about a teeny, tiny, teeny, tiny piece of that. But I just really applaud that and would love your thoughtful consideration of Amendment Number Two regarding parking. Again, it is so lovely to see each one of your faces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah. Former Councilmember Batiste. And I heard there's one more person. Steve, do you want to come up to the microphone?
Steve Purrer, I've lived in Old Town for about 14 years now. So I guess I'm going to open with an administrative question. Just it's not clear if regular business gets its own comment period, or I have to combine them now.
Is there any opportunity to comment during the regular meeting tonight? All right now, Steve.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. So the first comment had to do with the ICAP proposal, and I know it's just informational, so it's not a voting thing, so I'm okay with that. It just seems that we've been talking about environmental and ICAP issues as a city, as a nation, as a state, as a world for a long time. We keep talking about incentivizing and motivating and encouraging. We're not doing enough to put in place policy. We can't just incentivize people. We can't pay for people to make changes. We just need to take a step at some point and say, these are the things we're going to do to start requiring these things to happen. So I think ICAP depends more than just the city doing actions. It depends on people doing stuff that encourages us as people who want to see a change to make things happen. So just want to encourage that. Second, I had already kind of commented on the Title 18 changes coming up, and just kind of want to reinforce that again. It seems like development rights should only invest at the point where developers have an approved plan, not at the time they invest. It seems like with... There was a plan in the Issaquah Highlands for a proposal, and there was some legal actions that I understand that were taken that had to be enforced to decide with that. For a city, when the city first decided to become a regional growth center, we did it kind of backwards. We approved the plan, then we went back, and we're going back now and deciding what we want that to look like. We're doing too much incentivizing. We need to contain the decisions. We want to be able to enforce that and give away those development rights and invest in those developments. Development rights before that happens is the city losing control of that process, so that needs to not go forward. We talked about development retained or allowed within the 15% to 40% steep slope areas if it can be done safely. That needs to not go forward because we're going to lose all the environmental health. Instead, we keep comparing ourselves to how we want to look like. How does Mercer Island do it? How does Redmond do it? How does Kirkland do it? We're not asking what we want to be. We asked after the horse got out of the barn, we asked the question, what do we want to look at? What do we want to look like? So that needs to not go forward. There was another issue on SEPA development standards from five units to nine units per housing, not requiring SEPA development. That needs to not go forward because I think it ties in part with SEPA fees being revised later in the agenda item later coming, how much money we're going to lose, and having staff being required to enforce the standard, and there's going to be certain costs to come forward with that. Wow, 1:44 left.
You can see the timer. We can't.
Cool. So I guess last issue was... I want to talk about was city council remote attendance at meetings. I guess I've just been a strong proponent of the city council needing to be here if you're going to be here for city business. That should be the rule, not... There should be some exceptions allowed, but the general expectation is city council should be here and present. I think that should also apply to all city councils and city boards as well. It should be the remote. If a person comes to present something, there should be a meeting-greet opportunity or at least a chance to talk to the people that you're representing. So I think I don't approve of that going forward in its current form. And I'll give you back 55 seconds for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else in the room tonight that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I think everybody who chose to come and spent time with the city council this evening, we heard about the Leadership Eastside Program and the opportunities that they offer. We heard from a homeowners association about issues with the NGPE designation on a piece of their property and maintenance of a stormwater utility. We heard a couple of speakers talking about some recommended code changes this evening, and also about lived experience being very important in making decisions on housing and human services programs, and various issues from one of our speakers tonight on our climate action plan, Title 18, and also remote attendance at meetings. So thank you all very much for coming this evening. As a reminder, for those watching or with us, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. And we are going to move into our next item of business this evening, which is the consent calendar. I do have a comment this evening before we move to the consent calendar items. Public Works Department staff prepared a memo, ID 1430, the solid waste rate and contract revisions and attachments, and it is included on tonight's consent calendar. I wanted to highlight a few important pieces of information from this memo. The first scheduled rate increase in the city's new solid waste contract with recology, which council approved in June last year, does take effect on July 1st of 2023. This rate increase stems from changes to the Consumer Pricing Index and to disposal fees. Customers will receive a mailer in mid-May about this rate increase, along with information about recology services, a rate discount program for eligible households, and ways customers can offset the rate increase, such as by downsizing their garbage cart to a smaller cart or making better use of their recycling and yard waste carts. In addition, the memo explains that a second rate increase will take place on January 1st of 2024. This rate increase stems from a rate structure change that King County has made. King County's new fixed annual charge and amendments to the recology contract will be discussed at the council's Mobility and Infrastructure Meeting on June 13th. So I encourage everyone to watch for this mailer. Are there any committee chair remarks on items on the consent calendar this evening? Councilmember Hutton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are two items that went through the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee that I chair, so I just wanted to briefly note those. There is an ID 1433 informational update, comprehensive plan update scope. I have spoken to council previously about this, and we, as a committee, did review this on March 28th. We agreed with the proposed scope of the administration, and we had some comments about the scoping, particularly around the citywide parking plan, which I have previously reviewed with council, as well as scoping around some of the community engagement, which is in the packet. Then there is also AB 8597, which is the Public Projects Code of Conduct. This was also reviewed by the committee on March 28th. And one item I wanted to let council know is that in this committee meeting, we did recommend this for approval and consent as it is tonight, but we also wanted the communication aspect of the process that public contractors go through, that that communication plan, which is something that the city does communication on these projects, that that come back to the committee. And so that is in our materials for tonight, that that will... That communication plan piece will come back to the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee sometime this summer, so we will report back when that piece returns to Planning, Development, and Environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Chair Hutton. Are there any other committee chairs that need to share this evening? I am not seeing any. So the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove anything from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business this evening? Not seeing any. Could I have a motion? Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, the motion before the council is to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. We're going to move into the regular business portion, which is AB 8398, the Title 18 Land Use Code. The action before council this evening will be to adopt the ordinances, and this item was last before council at the April 17th city council meeting for a public hearing. And I'd like to invite Community Planning and Development Director Minnie Dallowell to present this item. Welcome, Minnie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and community members who either joined us on this journey from the beginning or somewhere down the road gone along. So this has been an effort the city undertook. It's been a multi-year effort, but we're here to present a land use code that is ready for council's consideration tonight. So the purpose of the meeting today is for council to deliberate and adopt the proposed ordinances. Actually, I'm going to share my screen so you can all see this little slideshow. So like I said, tonight, we're looking at deliberation and adoption from councils if you think it's ready. And as I've presented before, this is a process that has gone through lots of boards and commission meetings. We're here at the last phase. You all had a committee of the whole discussion on March 13th, held a public hearing on April 17th, and today's May 1st. The exhibits in your packet, there's Title 18 Proposed Ordinances A through I. Then we have Title II, which is just moving the portion about our boards and commissions from Title 18 into Title II because that's where all the other boards and commissions in Issaquah Municipal Code is. And then you have Attachment K, which is the Shoreline Master Program. We've also given you the list of future updates, which we've previously discussed with both PPC and Planning and Development and Environment Committee and the full council. Planning and Policy Commission's recommendation is included. The previous presentation and Exhibit O includes a couple of changes that happened after the public hearing as a result of proofreading. So there are not substantive changes, but inadvertently, there was a few... A couple of changes just in the permitted uses table to ensure what was being carried forward. No changes were made from what is currently allowed in the existing code, and then also under the parking table. It had uses that aren't defined but were left off in there. And Exhibit P includes all the public comments we've received with the last public hearing on April 17th onwards. And the Title 18 itself has all these A through I different sections that I won't go into right now. Like I mentioned, Exhibit O, minor errors fixed since the last time. We've wanted to be open and transparent, and those are listed there. The ordinances that were part of the public hearing on the April 17th, you know, we did go through a code publishing that publishes our code online. They did a preliminary cursory review and found some references that were incorrect and things of that nature. Those were fixed in the public hearing packet, as well as SEPA appeal procedures had to align with the state law. So that was all in the previous packets. So now on to public comments that council received during this last public hearing. There were some members of the community that spoke at the public hearing. Those are captured in the agenda bill, as well as some written comments that we received. First one was expansion of non-conforming structures and wetland and stream buffers. This item was previously discussed with PPC and Planning and Development and Environment Committee, and that section of the code that was requested to be reinstated was decided to not be in the code, and administration is recommending no changes on that topic because it was previously discussed and evaluated. The second item was related to appeals of the shoreline permits, that those should go directly to the shoreline hearings board. This is a comment that was not received during the earlier iteration. It was a new comment that came in. We did look into it, reached out to Department of Ecology, and while it's a policy decision for the city, both options are okay. But a lot of cities have gotten rid of shoreline appeals going to a hearing examiner as an open record appeal and then going as a closed record to the shoreline hearings board. When we were looking at processes, we had focused on the other Title 18 because this was a periodic update that the city had done. So we have proposed this as an amendment, and it meets one of the goals of best practices and streamlining the permit process. The third item was, as you heard in testimony tonight and in comments previously, was the parking reduction for legal non-conforming community services when they want to redevelop. So there are proposed amendments that is in your packet. What it provides for is a process to look at a use that is not categorically listed and how to determine the parking for them, and also to look at a practical, on-the-ground solution when that project comes to fruition. solution when that project comes to fruition. And then a lot of other comments were related to vesting of land use applications. Again, this was a topic that the Planning and Policy Commission had previously been briefed on, as well as the committee, and administration is not recommending any changes of this at this time. After the public hearing was done, there was some comments that were emailed from Motel 6, and those were in relationship to stream buffers, asking the council reconsider the stream buffer widths from increasing them to 150 feet to keeping them at 100 feet and allowing 50% reduction. So I did have a phone conversation with them to kind of explain where our process is, and we're not recommending any changes on that. So now it gets, you know, I'll try my best to kind of explain the logistics if, as council deliberates on this. So the first one is a potential amendment, and it deals with the local appeals for shoreline permits. What this will do is, if council chooses to do this, will amend the ordinance three, which, and Exhibit B in that ordinance three, and the specific table to allow these shoreline appeals to go directly to the shoreline hearings board instead of the city's hearing examiner as an interim step. And the potential amendment two is for this ordinance seven and Exhibit C, which allows a process for uses that are not specifically listed, to have a parking determination made by the director based on similar uses and traffic studies and parking analysis, and also allows for a process for the shared parking, on-street parking, and all of those flexible parking tools cap to be raised from 40% for redevelopment of legal non-conforming community service establishments that comply with the goals and policies of the city's Human Services Strategic Plan. And the third item that we wanted to kind of briefly touch on is throughout the update process, you know, we, there were no changes made to zoning or the permitted uses. That was outside the scope of this update. However, during the review, it became, there were two zones that had the same zoning designation, but had different standards. So multifamily medium, old town had different standards, and multifamily high had different standards than other multifamily highs. So the standard stays the same, the names of the zones for those two areas were added. So there's a map that just reflects all of that discussion that happened in the hearing process. The text was amended, so anything in the ordinances includes that. So this amendment will add to number section one to say the official Isaguac zoning map adopted by reference in this 18100 IMC is amended as depicted in Exhibit D, to make it explicitly clear what that zoning change was. So again, it's, it's just not a change in the zone, but just a naming change. So our recommendation is that council adopt all of these ordinances, and perhaps follow the process you do for consent agenda, where you can vote on everything together, but if there are ordinances that you would like to separate out, you would pull them out from A through I, and then you have a separate motion for Title II, and then a separate one for Shoreline Master Program. And so the three amendments that we've talked about today, we can pull out the exact ordinances if council chooses. So timing and next step, we're here, we're anticipating you all will deliberate and take action. And if you do take action tonight, then the effective date of these ordinances will be June 1st. Also on your agenda is the, if this item is decided upon, then you will have the item about the fees coming up after that. So that's it for Title 18.
Thank you, Director Dollywell. Looking for questions at this point in time? I will also do a little bit more process explanation in my opening comments, too. Any questions? After 24 months, there's no questions left. Hmm. Okay. So a little bit of an explanation of the process for council and for those that are with us and watching as well. So due to the number of ordinances slated for adoption tonight, we'll be treating them somewhat like a small consent calendar, as the director indicated. There are 11 ordinances for adoption and three proposed main motions. So motion adopting ordinances 1 through 9 is the first motion. The second motion is adopting ordinance 10, and the third motion is adopting ordinance 11. First, I will ask you whether you are comfortable adopting ordinances 1 through 9 together in one motion, or if there are any ordinances you would like to vote on separately. It is recommended that ordinances number 10 and 11 be voted on separately. So is the, if there is a council member who desires to offer amendment number one or amendment number two, provided in the agenda packet, then, and I believe a number three as well, then the respective ordinances, ordinance number three for amendment number one, oh, this is getting squirrely, ordinance number seven for amendment number two, they will need to be voted on separately. Does any council member desire at this time to consider any of the ordinance numbered as ordinances 1 through 9, Exhibits A through I in the agenda packet separately?
Can I, can I do a point of information?
Sure.
So I'm wondering if Clerk Giezer can give us a procedural note on an option that might streamline this.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Yes, a wonderful suggestion was provided that if the council is comfortable making one motion to adopt ordinances 1 through 9, that the amendments could then be considered after that's made, to kind of limit the confusion and the additional motion. So someone can make that motion, and then someone could offer amendments 1 through 3.
Is that helpful?
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. Does any council member desire to consider any of the ordinances numbered as ordinances 1 through 9, Exhibits A through I in the agenda packet separately? And I'm not seeing any indication of that. Can we have a first motion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinances numbers...
They're identified 1 through 9 in the packet. Their official numbers will be numbers 3, 311 through 319.
Exhibits A through I of AB 8398, repealing and replacing Title 18 Land Use Code of the municipal, of the Isaguac Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council President, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Hunt, and then Council President Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This code update is a huge step towards implementing the vision that the community has set forth for the future of the city. And to get here has been a real journey. It has been a lot of work, and I wanted to make sure to thank all of the individuals that have contributed to this project over the last several years. We couldn't have gotten here without the hard work of staff in our Planning Development Department and across the city staff, and we have, with the help of staff, taken care to listen and include our community members, business community, environmental community, human services community, neighborhood groups, all of which, of course, are the Isaguac community. And we had some big goals for this update that we really could not have achieved without input from all of these stakeholders. We had goals like protect forested hillsides, conserve our critical areas and protect them from degradation, improve fish and wildlife habitat, increase housing diversity, align with our climate goals, effective management of travel, and also modernizing with best practices and making sure that we had a transparent and reliable, predictable process for everyone who would engage with our municipal code. These were, these were big goals. We had so much help to get here from so many different individuals who worked hard with us to provide their individual perspectives and, and worked with us to make sure that the code helps us get to where we need to be as a city. I am grateful for my part in this update. I've been involved with this project closely since serving on the ad hoc committee, where we first worked on this goals and outcomes charts that has guided this process. And I wanted to make sure to mention that ad hoc committee included former council member Goodman, as well as Council President Walsh, and I think that the process has been guided by the work of former council member Goodman, from her contributions to that project from the very beginning. So in conclusion, I'm looking forward to what comes next, and this is where we implement the code. Like I said, this code update is a huge step towards implementing the vision the community has set forth for the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Chair Hunt. Council President?
I think I'm going to say very much the same thing, because I think it was clear through this process that this was an amazing body of work. It was really a wonderful process, starting with that ad hoc committee and creating, you know, we struggled with that concept of how are we going to judge when this is done? How do we set a scope for such a project? And we had to put things aside. We also had to understand, well, what are we trying to accomplish? And so really, starting out with that goals and outcomes chart was important. The community really engaged meaningfully on this. There was a ton of comments and a ton of back and forth between staff and the community. The community also really participated in code testing, which was something that was really wonderful to see. I wanted to thank our consultants, our community planning and development staff and leadership, and our legal team, who really worked tirelessly to bring together what used to be three sets of old outdated code that often contradicted each other, and then sorting through all of our desired changes, and then keeping the process rolling even as we went through a pandemic, and then came through it and had all of these other things that we needed to work on. To keep this rolling was really important. So while this is not the end of all of the updates that are needed, I think it really represents a moment to celebrate hard work that really took, it took a lot of backbone and gumption to get all of this done, so that we can be at a better place to look at some of these other things that we need for our community going forward. So really pleased.
Thank you, Council President. Would anybody else like to make comments? Not seeing any. Find out where I am. So if there is no further discussion, the motion before council at this time is to adopt ordinance, am I missing somebody?
We're going to do an amendment.
Amendment now? Okay, sorry. Is there someone who'd like to speak? Councilmember Hunt?
Yes, I would like to move the first amendment, which is amendment number one. So I move to amend ordinance one. Is that correct?
311.
Move to amend ordinance 311 to amend IMC Table 18.204.030, review process to eliminate local appeals for shoreline permit decisions and change the appellate body for the shoreline permit decisions, Level 2, to the Washington State Shorelines Hearing Board instead of the city hearing examiner. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
And Mayor, if I could just correct that, it's actually ordinance 313, number 3.
Thanks. Not seeing any, I'll call for a vote on the amendment number one. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? That carries, amendment, number one carries unanimously, 7-0. Is there any other amendments? Councilmember Hunt?
I move to amend ordinance number...
This is regarding parking. It's ordinance 317.
Yes, 317, to amend subsections 18.604.020 (B) and 18.604.160 (C), to provide a process for determining required parking for uses that are not specifically listed, and to eliminate the 40% cap for parking reductions to allow redevelopment of legal non-conforming community service establishments that meets the goals and policies of the humans, of the city's Human Services Strategic Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. We expect that the code will need to change over time as we get input from community groups and input from people implementing the code. And this last, this proposed amendment does address input that we heard in both the public hearing and in committee, that we heard from the Isaguac Food and Clothing Bank. And we've addressed that concern from the Isaguac Food and Clothing Bank here in a way that also aligns with our city Human Services Strategic Plan, which is a plan that the city has put resources towards and is very dedicated towards making a reality, and we look forward to continue partnering with the Food and Clothing Bank, as well as our other human services providers throughout the city that do such important work. So I put this motion forward because I think it addresses the concerns of our very important community partner, as well as addressing our goal for this code update, which is to align with our existing plans and the plans, and the existing vision that has been set forth for the city.
Any other comments? Council President?
Thanks. Real quickly, strongly support this. I think this as an opportunity, yes, it came late in the game, but it represents and supports a lot that comes with our strategic plan and community goals. I think it's also worded in a way that is very tightly conforming to a need, and really it does make me think quite a lot about our code and our ability to allow for redevelopment in our downtown core, which, you know, do we really want to tear something down and rebuild it with half parking? So I really think this gives us a lot to think through, but because this is very tightly written for a specific need, I am absolutely supporting this, and I hope everyone else will, too.
Any other comments? I will reread the motion on the table. This amendment, amendment number two, is to move to adopt ordinance number 3017, adopting 18.600, 18.602, 18.604. Wrong one?
Excuse me, excuse me, it's this one, this guy right here. Sorry.
Okay. Too many on here. There's a lot, there's a lot on here. See her clerk, she's like right on top of it. Okay. The amendment on the table is a motion to amend ordinance number 3017 to amend subsections 18.604.020B and 18.604.160C, to provide a process for determining required parking for uses that are not specifically listed, and to eliminate the 40% cap for parking reduction to allow redevelopment of legal, non-conforming, human, community services establishments that meet the goals and policies of the city's Human Services Strategic Plan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. That is the second amendment. That carries 7-0. Is there additional amendment? Councilmember Hunt?
Yes, I move to amend, this is the third potential amendment. I move to amend ordinance number...
311.
311, to amend section one by adding the official Isaguac zoning map adopted by reference in chapter, oh, yes, I'm sorry, adopted by reference in chapter 18.100 IMC, is hereby amended as depicted in Exhibit D attached and incorporated herein, and add the city's official zoning map as Exhibit D to the ordinance. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Not seeing any discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay? That third amendment carries unanimously, 7-0. Are there any additional amendments? Not seeing any. If there is no further discussion, the motion before the council is to adopt ordinances number 3011 through 3019, Exhibits A through I... number three zero one one through three zero one nine, exhibits A through I of AB eight three nine eight, repealing and replacing the Title eighteen land use code of the Issaquah Municipal Code as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously, champagne corks popping. This was the big, big lift that we tried to start before COVID. So I also would like to, oh, we're not done, we have more ordinances to go. Okay, I'll save my comments, save my comments. Okay. Is there a motion maker for the second motion? Council member Hunt?
Yes, so I move to adopt ordinance number?
Thirty-twenty.
Exhibit J of AB eight three nine eight, amending chapter two point three zero, two point three two, two point three four, two point three six of the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding updates to established boards, commissions, and the hearing examiner. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and oh. Is there an additional motion? Council member Hunt?
Yes, adopt, I move to adopt ordinance number?
Thirty-twenty-one.
Exhibit K of AB eight three nine eight, adopting chapter eighteen point eight zero four of the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding the shoreline master program. Second?
I have a question. I'm looking at a exhibit J. So, okay, exhibit J, exhibit J. It may just be the, okay, no, I got it, sorry, great. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number three zero two one, exhibit K of AB eight three nine eight, adopting chapter eighteen point eight oh four of the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding shoreline master program. Is there any discussion? Council member Hunt?
Thank you. Many of the goals for this update were about environmental protection and about protection of our fish and wildlife habitat, and making sure that we do not degrade our natural resources. And a lot of our very special, natural resources are protected within the shoreline master program. So I wanted to make sure to give special, special recognition of the improvements in this section, which will go a long ways towards protecting our shorelines, including the Lake Smamish shoreline.
Thank you. Any other comments? So the motion is to adopt ordinance number three zero two one, exhibit K of AB eight three nine eight, adopting chapter eighteen point eight oh four of the Issaquah Municipal Code regarding the shoreline master plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, the seven and oh vote. And at this point, are there any additional motions? We had some extra notes here, just in case there were. Okay, great. Well, I want to thank the community and the council and the staff for the work on this project before we move on to our next item of business. If you are not involved in local government, you have no idea how big of a job you guys just got through, an enormous process, one of the biggest I've ever participated in my thirty years of living here. And you did it in an amazingly transparent and complete way, capturing all of the comments of those that wanted to provide you with feedback, responding to all of the comments. It's one of the best processes I have ever seen. And so big thank you to Minnie Dollywall, our director of community planning and development, Amory Soto, our deputy city attorney, who really spent a lot of time going over this code, Christian Gates, our planning manager, who we'll be hearing from later tonight, Stephen Padua, long range planning manager, Valerie Porter, our planner, Stacy Van McInstry, our sustainability manager, and all of the staff, and Public Works, Parks, this touched everything that we do. So a huge, big thank you. But also, it's one of the few processes where I've seen such a high level of board and commission engagement, really active, really meaningful, very helpful engagement, development commission, environmental board, park board, economic vitality commission, and especially the planning policy commission, who probably don't ever want to put their hand up again for another job. Everything was so thoughtful, there was so much feedback, and it was all put together in such an amazing way. But my last thank you is for council. I think you did a fabulous job of raising your collective vision to the fact that the way our community in our town functions is by the systems that are within it and not parcel by parcel. So you hear from a lot of folks who say, but just my parcel, or just this little bit, and you really transformed our code to make it about the environment and all of the different systems that are so important in this community, you know, the forested hillsides, the water, our water table. These changes are extremely revolutionary for our code. And it's all because you wanted to do it at this level, and just, and a really impressive body of work. So thank you so much for doing this. Every mayor I ever talked to is shocked that you took on the whole code. So thank you, thank you, thank you. That was amazing. And now we'll move on to our next business item, which is EB eight thousand six hundred. This is amending the IMC three point six four schedule of land use and site work permit fees. And the business before you this evening will be to adopt the ordinance. And our planning manager, Christian Gates, is here to join us. Hi, Christian.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council. I've got the task to put the, put the wheels on this thing now, and take it up for spin, to update the associated fees that are, that are part of all of these changes that have gone through. So new permits were created, existing permits, we renamed them, and some permits and processes were eliminated. So the agenda bill before you seeks council's adoption for an ordinance for those, those fees found in chapter three point six four. The proposed amendments were not anticipated to have any significant effect on budget revenues, and they aligned with the current anticipated projections. And they maintain proportionate levels of fees within, within the categories that were preexisting. So just a little bit of a cleanup there.
That's great. Thank you, Christian. Are there any questions? Okay, is someone prepared to make a motion?
Let me see if I can find it. I think I, oh, fantastic. I move to adopt ordinance number?
Thirty-twenty-two.
Amending chapter three point six four of the Issaquah Municipal Code to apply fee adjustments related to associated code amendments to the city's land use and site work permit fees.
Second?
Bit of a rush to get to the speaker. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that carries unanimously as well, seven and oh. Thank you very much, Christian, for your thirty seconds of work for tonight. Thank you, you did a great job. The next item is amending city rules, city council rules with regard to remote attendance. And the ask of you this evening is to approve the resolution. And city clerk Tisha Geezer is here to present the item. Tisha?
Hello. I'm Tisha Geezer, city clerk, and I'm forgetting how to start my slideshow. Okay, there we go. All right, so I'm here tonight to talk to you about potential amendment to your council rules regarding remote attendance. So as a reminder, back in September of 2020, you amended your council rules. At that time, you were holding exclusively virtual meetings, and you allowed a provision for remote attendance during a declared emergency, which we had two in place at that time. We had our state emergency and our local emergency, and a federal emergency, three. In March of 2021, the council resumed in-person meetings and continued to use that remote attendance option conservatively, typically. In fact, I, I don't recall that we ever had two council members attending virtually at one time, there may have been one or two meetings. But over, since March 2021, that remote attendance has almost exclusively been used for illness or the need for quarantine with occasional travel in there. In October of 2022, the governor ended Washington State's declared emergency, and last month, the mayor terminated our local emergency, which means at this moment, the council doesn't have a provision for remotely attending meetings, which is why I'm here tonight to talk about potential plan for that. So in considering how the council has used remote attendance and how it's been working over the last few years now, and also borrowing a provision from the city of Bellevue, the proposal before you tonight has two components to it. So the first would be allowing remote attendance of council members, and this would be at any meeting, committee, committee of the whole, regular meeting, special meeting, for three reasons. In this first category would be medical issue, illness, is a medical issue, medical issues, or traveling on city business in your role as a council member. And in those situations, no approval would be required, you'd be requested to provide advance notice. The nice thing is because we've kind of committed to this hybrid option, there isn't the need for last minute, you know, adjustments when a council member is attending remotely, so we can be a little flexible. And that's been proving to be helpful, especially in the case of illness, which can be unanticipated. Remote attendance for these reasons wouldn't have any kind of limit on it. Again, it would just require advance notice being provided to the council president and city clerk, and committee chair, if for a committee meeting. The second category here would be remote attendance for other reasons. And this would be limited to four meetings total per year. Virtual attendance for other reasons would need to be approved by the council president, so a written request would need to be provided, and written approval would need to be provided forty-eight hours in advance of a meeting. This allows for some flexibility for potentially business travel or other reasons when a council member may wish to attend virtually. There were some other minor changes in the proposed resolution tonight. One would be just formally acknowledging this commitment to hybrid meetings for all regular meetings and most special meetings unless you're taking a bus tour. That's challenging to do in a hybrid format, but, you know, in, in most cases, we'll be continuing to offer that hybrid, hybrid option. There were some other additional minor changes, reducing the advance notice if you're to attend virtually, providing some clarifications regarding roll call votes. I don't know if you've noticed, but lately, when we've had one council member present, we haven't been doing those. I think the clerk's office has been listening for that voice and confirming that an audible vote was cast. So that's just a slight efficiency. This last point here was brought up by council, council president, which is if you're attending one of these meetings virtually and your connection is lost, it would, you would be acknowledged as excused. So he's asked to provide a few comments about the city's boards and commissions and how they've been considering remote attendance. So we have thirteen advisory boards, so far, seven of them have adopted a remote attendance policy, and there's two more that I expect will, but haven't finalized their policies yet. Of the seven, five of them have adopted the policy the city recommended, which was having a quorum in person, so really emphasizing that in-person attendance, but allowing some flexibility if they're unable to attend in person. One of the boards chose to take a slightly different take on that and require a little more flexibility, saying their members just needed to attend fifty percent of meetings in person, but still encouraged in-person attendance. And we had one board who wanted a more open-ended approach. So it has been an interesting discussion, and I think something that has come through is that we have demonstrated efficiency at operating hybrid meetings, as have our board and commission members. And so there is, there is interest in having that be an ongoing component of our commission meetings. So some options tonight, this is sort of a one-touch item, we're bringing it to you tonight for action, that's pretty much because of the time sensitivity and wanting to get a policy in place. But you do have some options to propose some amendments tonight to the proposed policy, or if you'd like to make some more substantial changes, you could provide direction tonight, and this item could be brought back at your May fifteenth meeting. I would also like to make a note here that while we're bringing this forward as a proposal, these are your rules, we're giving you a starting point here. So look forward to the discussion, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, city clerk. Are there any questions? Is somebody interested in making a motion? Council president?
I move to adopt resolution number?
Twenty twenty-three oh nine.
See, even on there. Amending the city council rules of procedure regarding remote attendance by city council members.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Council discussion? Council president?
Thank you. Yeah, this is coming up quickly, just because we ended a emergency mandate and needed another opportunity. I think our council has done wonderfully with this. We are not seeing people take advantage of it, we are not seeing members of council who are opting to stay home to avoid the public. We all really enjoy engaging with each other and with the topics at hand. And so we just wanted to offer an opportunity that if someone is traveling that's not on city business, and there's a very important meeting while you're gone that you want to remote into, this gives an opportunity to do that, to very importantly, be able to represent your constituents. And we, as a community, have very much recognized that we are more than willing to readjust our rules as needed if we find something that doesn't work for us. More than happy to hear from everyone if there are any concerns.
Council member DeMichele?
I just wanted to underline the fact that we have a very efficient method here in the meetings flow. If you're at, here remotely, I feel a part. When I've had to do that, I felt really a part of the meeting, even though I'm on the other side of the screen. So I wanted to thank our tech staff that has done a fantastic job of making this a really good experience, no matter whether you're in person or, or remote. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Martz?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll be opposing this measure this evening based on my longstanding position that it's not providing full accessibility as elected officials when we don't physically participate, and when the public doesn't get to be physically present with us. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Council member Hunt? No? Yes, council member Hunt?
Thank you. Well, I will be supporting this. I wanted to comment on the boards and commissions piece. I was a former commission member, as, as many of us were on council, and I think that this flexibility will provide additional, will be more inclusive to more members of the community who can join remotely when they need to for medical reasons, or childcare reasons, or any number of reasons. So I wanted to signal my support, especially for that part of this update.
Thank you. Council member Joe?
Thank you. I would also like to just comment on the dedication of our boards and commissions. I attended a recent human services commission meeting, and one of the members actually had phoned in from Africa to her meeting. And she was, I think it was two in the morning where she was, and yet she was still coming to that meeting and participating and taking part in it. So I agree with council member Hunt that it does allow greater diversity of people to come and participate in, in the decision-making of the city, and I wholeheartedly approve this motion. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm not seeing any, so at this time I will reread it. The motion on the table is to approve resolution number two zero two three dash oh nine, amending the city council rules of procedure regarding remote attendance by city council members. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That passes six to one. And before we move to the next item of business, I wonder if the council would allow me to provide some thoughts on this in terms of boards and commissions, since I've been working with them. I really appreciate all of the work the council leadership put into this. I also am very sympathetic to council member Martz's comment on part of the public process as being available, and part of being available is being here early and staying later, because people come here to find you. Our city clerk has done a wonderful job working with our boards and commissions. My messaging out to them is that we will always have a place for the public to come, and the best way to receive the public would be with at least a quorum of the members of a board and commission, recognizing that there are challenges for some to attend all meetings, but we have options for them to attend. But really wanting to make sure that the space around the table is very welcoming, and I think sitting in a room by yourself and talking to a screen of faces is probably not what we want our local government to be known for. So agree with the six, and agree with the one that voted against, that we have So agree with the six and agree with the one voted against, that we have a value in wanting to bring people together in a room. So thank you. The next item of business this evening is committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think at the last Cal meeting, I announced that there was a spring business leadership forum, May 10, at Blakely Hall. The mayor will be speaking, and they'll be talking about economic development and how we can support our businesses. I also remember that Council President Walsh indicated that she attended last year and thought it was a great event. I will be attending and look forward to that event. There are a couple of CWA meetings coming up. May 22 is the Public Policy Committee, and May 24 is the regular board meeting for the Cascade Water Alliance. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. On April 19, I attended the Regional Transit Committee meeting. We were presented with a report on the electrification of Metro's fleet, which includes the purchase of nearly 1,200 electric buses and 240 electric trolleys, as well as the closing and reopening of all the regional bus bases over the next six to seven years to retrofit them with charging stations. So it was kind of an amazing presentation. Following that discussion, we received a comprehensive report on Metro's pandemic recovery plan. And as reported earlier, Metro continues to struggle with driver recruitment and retention, and passenger return has been steady but slow and is well behind the goals that Metro has set. On our behalf, and especially on Mayor Pauli's behalf, I emphasize the importance of incorporating safety and security into the recovery plan for both passengers and drivers. And I think those comments were well received. So coming up on May 11 is Eastside Human Services Forum Board, and on May 12, the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There will be a meeting of the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee tomorrow, May 2. And we have one item on the agenda, which is ID 1411, Adoption of 2021 Building and Fire Codes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee will be meeting on May 9 at 6:30 here in council chambers, and the agenda has not been finalized yet. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will have an online virtual meeting Wednesday, May 10 at 7:00 p.m. A couple of topics that will be discussed, King County Homelessness Authority's Five-Year Plan, and the Blake Decision and Next Steps for Cities. Then there was no Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting in April, and the next one isn't until after the next council meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met earlier today to consider and approve an RFP response for a contract for services with the city of Mercer Island. The board did unanimously approve that RFP response, so Mercer Island will be reviewing several RFPs in the coming months, and we'll be sure to keep you all updated. Next steps include, if they were to select us, that final approval would then come back to the board after that Mercer Island review, so later this summer. Some more to come on that if you're interested. Also, you can get in touch with any of your three EFOR reps right here. Our next regular board meeting is next Thursday, May 11 at 4:00 p.m. at our headquarters on Newport Way. This is the meeting that will be getting an informational update on agencies' deployment model. So if you have any interest in kind of learning more about how EFOR deploys resources and manages their assets, this is the meeting. I have gotten the thumbs up that anyone is able to attend. So if you happen to be free next Thursday at 4:00 p.m. and want to sit in on the EFOR board meeting, let me know, and you're more than welcome to come. If not, I will be sure to share out the packet with you all. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Walsh.
Thank you. The King County Affordable Housing Committee met this morning. We adopted our annual work plan and received an update on the 2023 legislative session as it relates to housing. And then the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meets this Thursday. We will recommend the Greater Downtown Kirkland Regional Growth Center Designation and Subarea Plan Certification, along with a discussion on industrial lands, integrating stormwater solutions, and we will receive information about the regional housing strategy implementation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. On the mayor's report this evening, there will not be an executive session tonight. And I have a few comments about the proposed 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. So council members and residents, I'm pleased to present the city of Issaquah's proposed plan. Okay, I'm going to have to wing this here. So while I'm kind of, city administrator, I'm kind of looking through this, and there's a lot more information in here than I feel like we want to talk about at 9 o'clock this night. So I'll just sort of skim through. This is the next big task that you're taking on as a council that has a significant community impact, and it is really looking at how we do our capital improvement plan, which is a six-year plan that we are required to do by state law. It comes up every two years, and now that you're on a biannual budget, we'll be able to offset your budget year with your capital improvement plan. So this document, for those that are not aware, includes the city council priorities, and also will be including the input from our boards and commissions in the Capital Finance Community Task Force that we convened last year. It's the first CIP that actively seeks to address equity issues. And with every project, we ask questions about who would or who would not benefit from a particular project. The CIP also incorporates recommendations from our Issaquah, which is our city's strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, water and sewer system plan, the climate action plan, and the park strategic plan. So the 2024-2029 CIP will propose 136 projects spanning the six-year planning period, which will total more than $333 million of investments in utility and street infrastructure, public safety and municipal facilities, technology and systems, and parks and trails. As a city that grew from about 17,000 people in 2000 to more than 40,000 today, Issaquah has short and long-term capital needs in order to accommodate both growth and maintenance of our aging infrastructure. And as we've talked many times before, these needs far outpace our current city revenue sources. Therefore, this CIP anticipates new revenue sources to help pay for Issaquah's infrastructure needs. First, in following the recommendations of the Capital Finance Community Task Force, I am going to be asking city council to approve a 0.1% sales tax, which will go towards transportation improvements. That will enhance the ease of getting around Issaquah for all residents and those who come here. And second, the CIP begins to address long-neglected needs in our public safety facilities, including the relocation of Fire Station 71, a new municipal court, and additional space for our police. And we've already started these conversations with the city council. So I look forward to our upcoming discussions on how to fund these critical public safety needs. And third, within this six-year plan, we propose catching up on many of our parks and trails needs in order to assure that our public spaces continue to serve our dynamic community. So I look forward to those conversations with city council and the community on how we are going to fund those needs. Finally, the CIP process proposes more emphasis on maintenance and repair of our infrastructure than ever before, and this is across all asset categories. I'm also excited to announce that the CIP includes extensive investment in sustainability, incorporating many of the recommendations from the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, and furthering our goals for climate responsibility and environmental sustainability. I appreciate the hard work, contributions, and feedback from our boards and communities' members that will participate in this process. This is a great example of why the Title 18 process was successful, and we can carry this on into our CIP work. And next item for this evening is the Hall of Fame nominations. And I just wanted to let the council and the community know that the nominations are still open for the Issaquah Hall of Fame Award, which is a top honor for making a lasting contribution to our Issaquah community. Each year, the mayor and council president select a person to induct into the Issaquah Hall of Fame for their exemplary record of inspiration, leadership, and service. The award will be presented virtually at the Chamber of Commerce's annual Issaquah Community Awards Event on May 24, and nominations can be submitted at issaquahwa.gov/nominate. The deadline for nominations has been changed to 5:00 p.m. on May 8. Couple of upcoming events. Issaquah Farmers Market returns. This is an event every summer that occurs on Saturdays from May through September, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And our 2023 season will again offer a variety of farm- and food-based products, onsite concessions, and local artisans. And the last item is Walk and Wag. Please bring your dog to Lakes Amish State Park on Sunday, May 7, and participate in our 3K Walk in the Park to benefit the friends of Lakes Amish State Park. And after the 3K, please stay on for our pet show. Pet show categories include best dressed, smallest dog, best size, dog owner look-alike, best voice, and one of the judges, or the only judge is probably me. I cannot remember. I think there was two or three of us, but I might be the only one. And that's the last item I have on the mayor's report this evening. So we'll go to Good of the Order. I do have some meeting announcements, but let's take Good of the Order items first. Council President and Deputy Council President.
First, a quick correction. I believe the chamber's community awards is going to be in person, not virtual. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And then I've got two things. Reminder, we have a council retreat this weekend. So Saturday, the retreat will be at Tibbets Creek Manor. We'll meet at 9:00 a.m. There will be pastries and coffee, followed by a review of our community survey and performance measurement program. That will be followed by lunch, and then a bus tour. We're going off-site to visit a few capital projects. Also a reminder that we've sent you some suggested ways to prepare for this, and we will also be sending out some more information, particularly on the performance measurement, on either Tuesday or Wednesday. The full packet will be out on Tuesday as well. So lots to cover and be prepared for all of that. And then I wanted to close the loop back on something that you guys had kind of asked us to look at, which is how is the board and commissions receiving information from council? How are they getting feedback on how their work has done? There was a lot of work within the administration on agendas and working with each of the staff members that works on those board and commissions. We looked through, watched all of the meetings, confirmed that there is an opportunity both for staff to present what's happening at council on some of the agenda items that may have come through, and then also, once something has finalized and we've either used or adopted some of the information, providing the feedback on that. I'm sure there will be a lot on the Title 18, going back to PBC in the next few meetings. But just wanted to close the loop and let you know that that is happening. There is more bidirectional communication happening with each of the boards and commissions at this time because of that ask for feedback. So, thank you.
Great. Deputy Council President.
Thank you. Real quickly, so there are new board and commission members, speaking of board and commissions, and their first meetings are coming up. So building off the success of last year, we're going to start organizing thank yous again from volunteers on the council. So look for an email from me this week if you're interested in signing up to go to a board or commission meeting to thank them for their hard work during their public comments section. You'll have an opportunity to do that then, and we would really appreciate it. So, thanks.
Are there any more Good of the Order items?
Madam Mayor.
City Administrator.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, council, for your patience with the proclamations this evening. For whatever reason, all of the municipal groups seem to do all this in May. Councilmember Joe talked about Drinking Water Week and the importance of drinking water. I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware that in addition to getting water from the Cascade Water Alliance, that our dedicated city staff work on a number of wells throughout the community to receive water, and we also receive water by many of our residents in the Sammamish Plateau Water Agency. So water is extraordinarily important here in this community. It's a very complex system here in Issaquah, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware how complex it truly is, and we really appreciate the work of our public work staff and moving it all around.
Thank you, city administrator. And back in the early days, when Ruth Keys was advocating for it, we had a spring up on the hillside. We didn't even have the wells. So much has changed in Issaquah's water history. I'm just going to add a couple items, just reiterating what council president said. Saturday, May 6 is the retreat, and Monday, May 8 will be the Committee of the Whole. The anticipated agenda items for that meeting are ID 1342, Police, Court, and City Hall Planning, future options; ID 1341, the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan, Facilities Funding, and New Funding Sources for Capital Projects. There is no executive session this evening, so if there's no further business, we're adjourned at 9:06 p.m. Thanks.